Good afternoon. Welcome to the Platoon School Committee Meeting for Monday, March 28. We just kicked things off here. We've got a lot to cover today. I know Mrs. Pardell is here with us in the audience. That's us, so off we go. We have the minutes from February 22nd.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from our February 22nd meeting.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have executive session minutes as well.
Make a motion to accept and hold the executive session minutes from our February 22nd meeting.
For a second.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any comments that wasn't in the box at the townhouse? Do we have anything additional? Something from that. New business? You want to just sort of touch base on the topic of parking at school events?
Yeah, I attended the last event we had.
Talent Show, yeah.
Talent Show, which was great. The teachers did an awesome job up there, their bit there. But I did notice that there is a lot of parking at the front of the entrance. And I just had some concerns that emergency vehicles would not be able to enter the building in that, you know, that small area with the cars.
Parking on both sides, both.
Both sides or even on one side, if the cars are bumper to bumper, you know, if something happened, you know, somebody needed some assistance from an ambulance or stretcher coming in, or, you know, or even if the fighter pilot had to come in, I don't think they would have a hard time entering the building. So it's just something that I had noticed and wanted to bring up, so.
It is definitely a problem. We have something that spans K through six. Oftentimes, if one is something in an event like parent conferences where people kind of come and go in the whole time, but it is definitely an issue. One thing that we've done to try to alleviate some of that issue is at least have staff park up front, up on the grass to create that many more spaces. I don't know off the top of my head how many spaces are actually out there, but, you know, when we have a very popular event, I mean, a third of the schools involved with the talent show. Perhaps I could speak to the fire chief, police chief, see if they have any suggestions. I certainly would like to work with them and not against them.
Do we have cones that we could block off at the front?
That's what I was wondering if we could.
During an event? Do we have any cones in the building?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, maybe that's what we could try.
Another thing I know they have, you know, they have those sort of temporary smaller, you know, no parking, fire lane type of things that maybe as we get to the end of the year, that might be something worth getting a few of those, just to.
That's a good idea.
You know, four of them or so, like, you know, along the, I keep that curb at least clear. I think that would probably do more than enough.
That's a good idea.
Because if people park on the grass on the other side, there's plenty of room. It's more parking along that side for that type of event, especially with that many people here. You know, the chance of having an issue probably goes up.
I don't think so. Mr. And, have we said that at the end of the parking lot, they were on both sides? Is that what I'm hearing?
They were everywhere.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking.
Right.
The front entrance.
Okay.
The cars, you know, you know where the buses come in?
Yes.
You know, I'm not talking from like, I'm not talking like from here to there, but I'm saying like, this part here where you wouldn't be able to get in.
Gotcha.
Nobody, they wouldn't be able to get in.
If you, if you have cars parked on the grass side of the front circle as well as, again, along the curb, then maybe they can get the ambulance through that, depending on how far people pull over on the grass side. But I think it's probably not, it's probably just not worth, well, one, we're not going to be able to educate everyone well enough to not do it. So I think that's why it's probably this path of least resistance is to put up a few of those things at special events to just remind people that, hey, this is a fire lane. We need to keep it clear.
I don't think it would hurt, though, to continue to put that into any area of community issues.
Right.
Just when we have that many people, I mean.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea.
And also, and we reiterate the reason why, you know, when we just park on both sides, emergency vehicles have no chance of getting.
Yeah, we need to keep the side by the curb clear so they can get a stretcher in or whatever. Yep. Excellent study. Kind of nice to have that problem.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
I get such good attendance.
Yeah, hold on a second. I was thinking, we talk about the talent show, we can talk about that when we get to CASA. So unfinished business, we have water treatment update.
Yes, I don't have a ton to report to you, unfortunately. I let Mr. Egan know that we had a meeting this afternoon at 4:30, and I was hoping that he would have something for us to look at. He replied in the email, he cannot have them ready that soon, but I'm getting closer. I'll send you and Dave the draft plans report and permit applications review soon, and can make them next monthly school committee meeting in April, or a special meeting if needed prior to that, once the plans and report are done. I'm not sure how much of an update that is, but that is.
Not much. You have in your packet the actual contract and the series of emails, which he clearly has not followed. And at this point, I'm looking for direction on how you'd like us to proceed.
What is the typical timeframe for something like this? Because I looked at that whole timeframe that was sent out, and Val is there, and I have nothing to compare it to. So what would be the typical timeframe for something like this to get accomplished, I guess?
I think the.
Because it just seems like it just keeps.
So to level set, though, I think we need to acknowledge that it took a decent amount of time to sort of get all of the information to him, then he had it, then we had the most recent issues towards the end of the year, and so additional information went in, additional sort of redesign of the system. So even with all of that, giving the benefit of the doubt, let's just say the end of the year, he actually had everything.
Yeah.
The contract, or the proposal had said 60 days. So we're already past that, and yet it wasn't, there was a good amount of time in the fall and early winter to work on this, too. So this is, and it's getting to a problem now, I think, that we are, we're risking or endangering a summer installation.
Exactly. That's what made me concerned at this point.
So from the presentation the gentleman made to me, I was very impressed by his technical prowess. He seemed to have a firm grip of our situation and how to deal with it. You know, I'm getting kind of concerned about the lack of progress, especially with the deadlines we have moving forward with this project. And when we have the installation occur, there's a couple areas where we are under contract with the green seal about those items. I see $6,400 outstanding that's yet to be accomplished. I think we might want to remind the gentleman of that fact. Speaking specifically to the preparation, prepare operation maintenance manual, I'd love to get that from him, since this is his design, but provide construction oversight and inspection. You know, at this point, if we're up against it as much, I would mind looking and seeing who's willing to get started and moving on this. I know we don't have his plan yet, and I don't want to lose that, but this is getting a little frustrating.
So I think at a minimum, we should have him come to the next meeting. If nothing else, that's, he can explain everything. But I also feel like perhaps we need to set a deadline for him that isn't the end of April. And, you know, because this still has to go to DDP.
Yes.
So this is a preliminary plan, but that needs the EP approval, and I would assume that they don't approve things in two or three days.
I'm sure. The other thing is, I want to make sure that he's clear that this will not be additional charges.
Correct.
Because that's a.
Well, we're supposed to be within 60 days. We're supposed to have the completed design report and mass EP application within 60 days.
He had all the information he requested from us at the end of October.
Right. And then even if you have that, and so that should have been worked, it should have been able to be done, and we're then with an addendum for the stuff that came up in December, you know, the deal with the lead issues, you know, the additional to raise the pH pretty much in the system would have been, to me, a tweak of the design. And now we've still done 60 days plus. So yes, I agree. We're kind of past.
Would you like me to do that, or are you?
However you prefer.
Okay.
What do you think? The school committee, they have reach out at this point? Okay. Yeah. Yes, no, I think that's absolutely, why would we pay for him to come to a visit when we're supposed to have the plan months ago? I think we need to make sure that we're going to get what the contract has stated, and at this point, he's put us into a position that is difficult.
Right.
And maybe everything will slide in, but even if we get the plans in a week, now assume it's going to be a month with DDP, so that puts us into early May, at which by then, I mean, maybe he does such a fantastic job that they say, okay, but assuming that there's going to be some level of edits, tweaks to it through mid-May, late May, RFP goes out, generally about a month to do that, which is three weeks, you know, until it gets into the registered surface through. So you're at the end of June before we're going to have something for the committee to be able to make a decision on from a bidding perspective, and then if they're able to do it in July or August. But there's lots of places there where this can go, a couple weeks here, a couple weeks there, and they're ready to start work in early September.
Right.
And I would assume that a lot of the work that they're going to do, that you can't have, they would have to do on a weekend or a vacation. I mean, if they're going to be pulling apart the water sys, I'd assume that room isn't big enough to build a new water system, and then just try to switch it over.
The component that I saw in Lakeville was surprisingly small. Not ever having done the work, John, I can't necessarily speak to that, but the system itself was not this huge elaborate thing, so to speak. It was very reasonably sized, and I think that they probably could work in the existing space fairly easily.
Maybe that's something we should ask him when we have him here, so that we can understand what we may be needing to do with it, because otherwise we'll have to schedule it, have to try and figure out if, you know, if we miss the summer, then we're looking for a day in the fall to do that.
Correct. So Peter, have you, have you spoken with him since we met last?
A couple times.
Okay. And he just gave, just no update?
No, just that he's getting closer.
Okay. Okay, we also have the breakfast program and school lunch on here. Updates?
I think we're going to try and trace in April.
Correct. Great. Thank you. Standing committee reports, administrative review.
The admin review is looking for my evaluations. If you have an opportunity to get those in, I believe they're due at the end of this week, Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. So if you were able to pull those out, I'm sure they would appreciate it.
Negotiations, we'll have discussions in the executive session about that. Evening 31, we have an upcoming meeting for that.
At 6:15?
About April 14.
Right, and that will be at the high school, and that's to review my evaluations. So that will be a joint meeting with the region and the elementarys.
So just to remind you, John, on the alternate, I'll be there anyways, so if we need someone, I will be there. PAC?
PAC is continuing to field test its new building and work out the kinks. They're also opening up a professional development center in Pilgrim Academy. Deb Booth, who is a Marine, right-hand lady, is developing some wonderful parent workshops, teacher workshops, administrative workshops, and there'll be information coming up about that. It's another resource that PAC provides to its member districts.
Anything on policy?
Nothing.
All quiet? Anything else with capital improvement?
No.
Legislative, anything you want to highlight?
As many of you know, Governor Baker recently passed legislation about opioid control and prevention of abuse. In some of that, there was implications for schools, including policies that need to be adopted by school committees. MASCE will be sending out guiding language in the near future.
All right, we'll bring this down to principals report.
Mr. Benito.
Great, thank you. We have had a little bit more fluctuation with our students here. We're gaining, it seems to be, we're gaining a few a month anyway, but, again, we had a couple of students that also moved away, so ultimately we're at 222 students right now. And we do have, the spring is incredibly busy. We have a lot of stuff happening in the next couple of months, but I'll just stick to what I have down here. Grade six, we're doing their placement testing for grade seven on March 29th and 30th. Mrs. Lynch has us involved in Jump World for Heart. We'll be doing that again, March 30th and April 1st during the students' PD time. We have citizen of the month assembly, April 4th. I'm not sure if Joy's going to get into any more detail about April 4th, 5th, and 6th. We have the Department of Education comes out for a coordinated program review. It is a comprehensive review that takes a little bit of time and energy, but we're happy to have them come down. They'll actually be here interviewing folks on the 6th, so that's going to be very busy there. April 8th, we have our citizen of the month pizza luncheon, and that night, there's a grade six versus, students versus staff basketball game. We have spring pictures on the 11th of April. On the 12th, Mrs. Sarata's organizing the mother-daughter tea for our grade five girls. And after that, on April 14th, we have the father-son night out for grade five boys. We have vacation coming up, the 18th to the 22nd, and then we're back here on April 25th for our school committee meeting.
So that answers whether you're going to be at the unique or you want to move this. You can't be in two places at once, apparently. Okay, Peter, thank you.
Hold on for a second. Mr. Benito, just wanted to compliment you and thank you again for the Dare Graduation for the sixth graders that we were lucky enough to, for some of us to attend. Officer Smith does great work with the kids, and you providing the time, and your teachers providing the time for him to come in and have that valuable instructional time is a testament to your commitment to the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you were able to attend. That was a very nice service. Thank you.
And I would also just add to that, that the whole presentation and program was really quite impressive.
Excellent.
I mean, for both, it's, you know, the content and quality there, and I was expecting it not to be quite as robust as it really was. Nice speakers and the whole thing. Other kids really seemed to like it, too, so. Got to get me also a word in class, so maybe that's.
No, that had no way of.
No, it was, it was really phenomenal.
It's something I'm very proud of. So thank you.
Do you want to just add that the fifth grade speakers were fantastic?
Thank you.
They were.
Hey, he got up there, and he got up there for the talent show, too, which was always good.
That's our thing.
Busy week, so, it felt really fantastic. And then on the CASA front, I would also just take a moment just about the talent show.
It was great.
I will admit to the camera that that is probably not something I typically want to do on a Friday night.
Correct.
I will, I'll just, I'll admit that, all right? But let me tell you, John, it was really phenomenal.
It was well-run. Last year was really long. This year was much better. I had one child participating, who you would never think would. But just Hannah, Lisa, and Veronica did a fabulous job running the entire thing, plus the rehearsals. They really just kept it very structured, and they added seats in the front, which really helped the kids kind of remain their composure while they waited or watched, as opposed to just kind of like a mosh pit. It was more structured, sitting in chairs. There was a huge turnout. It was just great. It was a very well-run event.
And I think the kids were just, I mean.
They were over the top.
Great, great talent, you know, from those that were doing some of those really difficult things, even down to the simple. Everyone really had their part into it and gave it their all.
Everybody had a role, everybody had, you know, accomplished what they needed to do, regardless of talent being shown, so it was really nice to watch.
And I think a lot of it, you can also tell, because not many people left, sort of like, after their kids were done, they didn't leave.
Yeah, thanks.
People were really there right through the end, so.
For the huge finale.
Congratulations to everybody, just paid in all the hard work that is.
It was great.
Quite a week, you have the Dare, and you have that on Friday, and it was just.
And then the Southwick Zoo is somewhere in there as well, which was another huge hit that CASA put on, and I know, like, my son came home talking about the Joey that jumped out of the kangaroo and the hole, and he was so very excited about that whole kind of, just a nice, different opportunity for instruction to happen in a kind of a hands-on way that was really nice. So that was another great event that I think he's wanted to have a look.
I would have them back anytime, if, they were phenomenal.
Yeah, I mean, and even my fifth grader, too. I mean, the feedback was wonderful.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
All right, let's see if you can beat that with finesse.
That's not much. This is going to be very exciting tonight. We've developed a new deficit, so now we have two. On page two of the detail, in the middle of the page, we have a deficit in our substitute account of $1,460.20. Currently, we have two long-term subs in place, so that's what's creating that situation. But we will have an offset of a positive balance in the teaching line, because they're not receiving pay for the whole town, they're, though they're out. So there'll be an offset that'll take care of that. And the only other deficit we have is on page six of the detail, and it is the out-of-district special education transportation. We're expecting a deficit of $6,533.90. That's based on the current student population that needs at this moment in time, and that's where we believe we'll be at the end of the year. The way the town budgets this pocket of money, they budget the whole special education section together, so there will be a sufficient balance within that category to offset the deficit. And the only other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is on the very last page, the out-of-district vocational account. We still have a surplus of just over 60,000, based on the students that end up going this year. Recently, we received an email that the town is looking for us to confirm that balance. I believe they're, they're looking to use that at special time meeting. So they're looking, they're asking us to confirm that balance for them.
And this number really hasn't been a change between now?
No.
Because, because.
I can't imagine what anybody would move in right now that, you know, that it would make a significant change, but this is where we are at this point in time. Are there any questions? Thank you for listening.
Good news.
Yeah.
Yes.
I have an update on our science curriculum. This year, we've been working with our curriculum coordinator, principals, and teachers on choosing new science curriculum materials to support the implementation of the 2016 Massachusetts Science and Tech Engineering Frameworks. During this past summer and fall, close to 10 resources were reviewed, including TCI, Engineering is Elementary, STEM Scopes, Foss, and Science Fusion. We received five presentations from various publishers, and ultimately, three curricula were chosen to pilot. Some of the important elements that we were looking for were a strong literacy component to support nonfiction reading, lessons that had a shorter window or a longer window in order to dig deeper, an online component, and we did not want a kit-based program as the district, the district had kit base in the past, which was difficult to sustain and had a yearly financial implication. So the pilots were done in grades K through five. The piloting teachers worked with the curriculum coordinator over the course of the year, together on observations of all three curricula, as well as professional development around components of the curricula and the alignment to content, as well as the practice standards. There was a unanimous decision not to adopt National Geographic Science Explorer due to the limited access to the frameworks that was provided. There was a limited variety to the materials, and it did not differentiate at all grade levels. Inspire Science and Interactive Science have been the two curricula that continue to be looked at. While Inspire Science does have positive components, it appears that Interactive Science has more opportunities currently for our students to differentiate the curriculum presentation and integrates STEM lessons. I, in the back of the room, there are some examples of both curricula on the table. Inspire Science has a large online component, which can't really be displayed at this time. We are expecting that by the end of the week, we will have a recommendation for which, which of the two to go with, and we are thinking that it's going to be a unanimous decision.
The amount of work that your classroom teachers have put into this, your K to sixth curriculum coordinator under your guidance has been phenomenal. It's been a long process. It's been well thought of, and whatever the teachers and the administration decides is the right course to go, I will have my full support behind that decision. So thank you for all that work.
Thank you.
I think just to test drive three different ones, it's a lot of work.
It was.
Because they have to fully understand that everything's there, and then just see how it flows out.
Melissa Farah on the classroom teachers really did a remarkable, remarkable job with communication, as really providing that input, that back and forth input, what components they liked, what components they disliked. In fact, Melissa has the two publishing companies going back and forth with each other about, you know, she, she would say, you know, we need this component, and they would say, yes, I know, we found out about that, we're going to implement it. But she's really been committed to, to making sure that the right program is chosen to use. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Michelle?
Thank you. So do you still have your budget from last month? If you don't, we have extra copies, if you'd like another copy. Do you need one, Mike, or are you good?
No, I'm good.
So last month, we gave you version two of the FY17 budget. We really haven't had any changes. However, the only thing we did change is we have left two spots available for vocational educational students. The window closes on Friday, April 1st, that's their last day to apply. So we did remove one spot for the number that we're going to ask you to vote this evening. We're hopeful that one spot will get us through the balance this week, and I know the town would appreciate if there is an opportunity for that money. If the committee chose us to leave both spots available to make it through this week, we can do that, but we thought at least this would give the town some information to move forward to, because we believe or hopeful that one more spot will get us through this week. So that's the only change to the budget at this point in time. Most of the students that are applying have applied at this point, but it doesn't mean we couldn't get an influx this week, but, and we can always increase it also. The town is, understands we don't have a control on this.
So if we had to, at our next meeting, to change that.
Absolutely.
That's the number that we go in, so as long as we make sure to let FinCom know that, I mean, I have no problem taking one out if that's what we think is more accurate as we sit here today.
I'd like it.
And we can always add it in if we have to.
Right.
Or, I guess, the alternative is, I mean, so after April 1st.
If they applied, then we don't ponder it.
So if there's still a spot open, then that additional spot?
We could, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. But that's our only recommendation at this point in time. Again, we feel this is a great budget, and the overall increase is pretty impressive, really low. Finish that sentence a little bit better.
Yeah, that's.
You know, our total regular day increase is only 1.91%. Total special ed is a negative 0.29%, and then our total without out-of-district special education is 1.41.
And so that.
And the grand total's actually a negative 2.69%, which is pretty amazing.
And then if we take the one slot out of district, oh, that brings us one.
Twenty-three thousand?
We're going to reduce it by 23,000 to 258,000.
I mean, that's.
You still have the original, the original version?
258,000.
258,000 would leave us still one spot.
Okay. I mean, that's, I mean, that's the focus in the budget that's going on.
It is, it is, it is. I mean, it's basically a percent.
Okay. Ask questions?
I want to thank Peter and Christine for doing such a great job in putting together this budget. Again, I think.
Ask questions?
I want to thank Peter and Christine for doing such a great job in putting together this budget, and again, I think it's very fiscally responsible, but it provides our students what they need, our students and staff what they need, which is what we're after, so I think it's definitely a budget to be proud of, to be very comfortable with.
I would just note for the, for the audience, that this is really the second year in a row that we have delivered a very tight budget, you know, trying to work with the town and the town's needs, not that even before that, the budgets were particularly lavish, but, you know, and I think we will continue to do that, but as we keep doing this, it also creates the issue that at some point, other things will come up.
Right.
And so, you won't be able to do this every year, but certainly, any year we can, we will.
Absolutely.
And that's sort of important to understand, that we are working to find balance, to make sure that the kids have what they need, and that we're doing it right by the school, and keeping it maintained, and keeping our, you know, our systems up the way they need to be, but also understanding that there is not a limited supply.
So.
All right, so we need to vote the budget.
I'd like to make a motion that Plimpton School Committee approve the 2016-2017 elementary school operating budget of $2,221,326.30 as the amount deemed necessary for the operation of the regular day.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that the Plimpton School Committee approve the 2016-2017 special education budget of $1,033,45.56.
Do you remember the way you want them?
I'm just checking. The numbers are the way we want them, yes.
Okay. I forget the way that they are voting.
We'll try to make it work with the way the town votes.
The town votes them differently than the way it looks, so I'm sorry, I just, if you're looking at my face in a minor panic, you're correct. Gray hair is really very becoming, I just want you to know, I'm good with this, it's fine.
So do we have a second on the special ed nomination?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that the Plimpton School Committee approve the 2016-2017 elementary school out-of-district vocational education budget of $258,000.
Second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you.
Congratulations.
Very exciting, it's the final one, yay, surviving. So, the next thing we have here is the draft calendar. So, the 2016-17 school calendar, and I believe, is this the first time you've seen that calendar?
No.
No, I didn't think so, great. So the last time you saw the draft calendar, since that time, I believe we've added the nice boxes around the dates. The boxes are very visually, really catch your eye, and it was a suggestion from another school committee member in one of our other towns, and I have to say, it's wonderful.
It took us how many years?
I know, I know, it's a funny thing, but it's so like, oh, yes, I have those days off, so we're thrilled with the boxes, we're very pleased with the boxes, so we now have boxes. The other thing that has changed since we last spoke about the calendar is, if you remember, we had not decided on a half-day for March because of the MCAS schedule was not official. The Department of Education is saying that based on the information and feedback they have gotten, that they're looking to have the MCAS testing for next year more in April and May, towards the end of April, May, so that we have more time to actually teach. It's an incredible idea, I wish I had thought of it. Okay.
It's like boxes.
It's so cool, it's so cool, sorry. So anyway, we're picking March 7th, Friday, 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 March 17th as our half PD day, which would be St. Patrick's Day, so with the luck of the Irish, it will be a great day, so that is on the calendar now, so that's our early release for our half-spring PD day. Other than that, the calendar is pretty well set. If you are comfortable voting the calendar, we can put it up there. It will continue to say draft, because until we have our school committee elections, the top part will not be changed, okay? But if you'd like to vote it as is, we can just make the changes on the top if you have any questions or concerns about the dates. But again, I think it's a, the calendar, the part that's important for people to understand is November 8th is our election day, and that will be our PD day. There are two districts within our system that have voting at their schools, so we couldn't possibly hold school those days, so we'll be doing that, and then the 11th. So that one week is an odd week for us, but it is what it is.
Just because this is, you might want to swap those two.
Oh yeah, that would be good, yeah.
Seventeenth and the 25th, I think we've got it added because.
Seventeenth and so, yeah, perfect, thank you. And there's no snow days for next year, just so you know, I already made that decision, so we're good. Yep, so that, that's good, yep, just like at the end of this year, it worked real well.
Did I kill you calling that the other day? Did it?
That was a tough one, that was a really, really long night, I was so happy.
It was just gonna, all the timing was just gonna be wrong, it was just gonna be wrong.
You know, I waited, I was like one of the last ones, because I really didn't want to have to call it, but everybody was so concerned about the buses, it was such a safety issue, but.
But the timing ended up being a safety issue.
It was a safety issue, I mean, it was the right call, it was a killer.
It was just starting to snow, I'm like, oh, this isn't gonna be good.
Yeah, yeah.
Not gonna be good.
It wasn't, it was a very long night, I was not happy.
I'll make a motion to accept the draft 2016-2017 school calendar and to accept the changes to the above relevant sections when time deems necessary.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm gonna skip over school choice, if that's okay, and I'm just gonna go through some of the resolutions. One of the things that I've been trying to do is to have us have more of a voice legislatively. There are several different resolutions that the other school committees have taken on, and one of them is a Chapter 70 resolution, and you may be aware that the towns are really not funded in a way that they can sustain the budgets, so that there has been a resolution that was put forward, and the body of it is in here, and it's, it looks like this in your packet, and it's a resolution that is put together by the suburban coalition, which doesn't necessarily make sense for Plimpton, but throughout Massachusetts, everyone is realizing that we cannot continue to sustain our educational systems with the way that we are funded at this point in time. So there is a resolution on the back page, which is calling for full funding of the foundation budget review, and if the school committee is so interested and would like to vote to have this resolution, I believe you had it in your packet, and hopefully had an opportunity to read through it, we'll put it on letterhead and send it to our state reps and our senators to let them know that we are looking for, basically, the state to fund these issues, because we cannot keep up.
Plimpton's pretty highly underfunded.
Extremely underfunded, it is very difficult to fund it.
Because however, they created this thing, so it certainly won't be a new item for our state rep or senator to hear from, because they've heard a fair amount about it over the years.
Right, and so far, all the other school committees have voted it and have sent it in, so again, we're kind of working our way through, just trying to get our voices heard a little bit more, and every, every, every letter that they get, I'm sure makes them a little bit more thoughtful as they're voting. If anyone is interested in making the resolution, personally, I think it would be helpful to actually read the whole resolution. It's not too long, it's in the back page.
All right, well, since I may be joining the MSC's Legislative Subcommittee in there, I might be taking on a couple of things, I might as well do this, since this is part of the group I'm gonna be joining.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make a motion for the Plimpton School Committee to join in the call for the resolution for full funding of the foundation budget review, whereas Massachusetts Foundation Budget Review Commission identified two areas, employee health insurance, special education, where Massachusetts Foundation Budget significantly understates the true cost of educating students in the Commonwealth and has failed to keep pace with the rising cost, whereas this underfunding means the cost of providing a quality education has increasingly been borne by local communities, most often at the expense of other vital municipal operations, whereas investing in education today leads to higher incomes and thus less investment in police, prisons, subsidized care, low-income housing, welfare, et cetera in the future, whereas state and local economies are most effectively strengthened by investing in education and increasing the number of well-educated workers. Therefore, be it resolved that the Plimpton School Committee calls on the Massachusetts Legislature and the Governor of Massachusetts to fully fund and adopt the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission in the immediate future.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will put that on some official letterhead, and I will send those off, and then I'll add copies in next month's packet for you, so you can have them for your record. Thank you. Secondly, let's see, we have the charter school letter. So one of the other things, as I was building the budget, was I started looking at the impact of the number of students who go to charter schools, and for the town of Plimpton, it is a small number, but for Plimpton, every number counts. I believe, and again, I apologize, I don't actually have the packet with me, but I believe it may have tripled, it may have gone from two students to six students, which may not sound like a lot, but again, it's that loss of income, and with Plimpton, every student does count. So we have a motion here asking the Massachusetts House and Senate not to raise the existing cap on charter schools in the Commonwealth. One of the things that has happened is we have rising tide charter school in Plymouth, but in the South Shore, in Norwell, there is, I'm totally drawing like what it's called. South Shore.
South Shore.
It is just South Shore Charter Schools, thank you, sorry. The South Shore Charter School raised their cap from 600 students to about 1,100 students, almost doubling the number of students who can go there. This can have a huge impact on us in our region, our seventh or 12th, it has really caused a huge loss of income for us, and it is something that there is concerns, because it really isn't an equitable playing field. So this is a motion that again was moved through our other school committees, and I would urge you to move, you know, again, every student lost is really a big number for Plimpton.
Because what happens now is that they go on the waiting list, or they go on the lottery, they're getting in, and then a lot of the students don't get in.
Right.
And so if they, if they're able to raise the numbers that they communicate, they need more students who are almost guaranteed to lose tomorrow.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
A lot of the marketing of charter schools is done by word of mouth, and a lot of the marketing is opinion-based and feeling-based, so if we get caught up in a swell of just a couple parents in our small community who think it's a superior alternative, it could really catch us by surprise very quickly and have a detrimental impact on our school.
Also, they have the right to solicit applications to their schools, and unless a parent opts out, and so we have to give them those names, so it's, it is something that, again, the playing field is not exactly leveled.
No, and with the appropriations that Governor Baker suggested for public education was less than 2% this year, but yet he raised his recommendation for charter schools by over 20%, so you can see there's inequity. We knew when Governor Baker was running for a governor that he was strongly involved in the Pioneer Institute, which is a charter school think tank, so this is no surprise that Governor Baker is going down this direction, but I don't think he understands exactly what it does to towns like our town.
Right.
I understand he believes it's in the best interest of families and students that have these choices, but the playing field is not leveled.
And I assume if you have a group of students, for instance, in Boston, if you're thinking about Boston, if you have a group of students that just, here to a charter school in Boston doesn't have a huge impact on their school system, but in the smaller districts.
Interestingly enough, in Boston right now, there's a civil rights lawsuit that's being filed by the NAACP because of the inequity of the reflection of the community in charter schools, but similarly, things can be said about our subgroups here, you know, low-income, free and reduced lunch, special education students are not reflected in the proportion that we have within our own community. So, you know, people talk about, well, these schools produce these students, well, they're not, they're not pulling from the average student.
Right. So we would need to do the same thing we did with the.
Absolutely, please.
Want me to do it this time?
It'd be lovely to hear you do it, Mr. Chair.
All right, so I would move this charter school motion, I move that the Plimpton School Committee requests that the Massachusetts House and Senate not to raise the existing cap on charter schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as proposed in legislation H.3928. We further request that the House and Senate introduce legislation restricting any new charter schools from enrolling students residing in towns and cities which have not passed enabling legislation for such enrollments. Such proposed legislation should include local taxpayer approval of any new charter school, local taxpayer elected oversight of the charter school's board of trustees, full funding of the Commonwealth's charter school expropriation, immolation account, required social, economic, and academic impact study of new charter schools in impacted communities before approval, measurable and enforceable requirements that all charter schools enroll and retain a representative cross-section of students with special needs across all levels, English language learners, and those classified as economic disadvantaged. Such groups should be represented across all grade levels in the charter school. We believe such legislation would allow charter schools to better focus their resources where local taxpayers have identified a demonstrated need for such schools and voted to accept such additional costs to their communities. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then the last article was one that I believe was forwarded to you from a selectman regarding the vocational educational transportation.
Oh, yeah, yep, so, there's a, I guess there's a, basically, a bill sort of sitting there in the Senate, looking for support, and there was sort of a push for that, because to essentially move transportation costs from the district to the parents, I guess similar to what happens with charter schools.
Exactly.
I had received, one of the selectmen had sort of forwarded this to me, saying that they were going to be in support of this and send their support along, but the, pretty much it was the next day that those, that support was due, so I did not, I did not do anything additional with that, because I did not have enough of an understanding of what the issue was, or even what both sides of those, of that discussion was at that point. But I think you had pulled out some of this information, so this is just for folks to be able to be familiar with what the actual bill is, you know, I think you can probably line up on both sides of this issue pretty evenly, and I think that some of the towns that are particularly pushing this, and that was kind of coming through this push, have some pretty significant costs associated, because they're sending their, a lot of their students quite a distance, and costs are hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in transportation costs, so you can certainly see that side of it, but I guess if transportation is considered too, then you certainly have vocational students, some students that would not be able to go, because their parents are not able to either drive themselves or pay for that funding. So this is more just an FYI that this issue is sort of brought up, and I think there's nothing heavy for us to do with it at this point, because that came and went a week and a half, two weeks ago, but I'm sure this won't be the last for probably.
This is at least the second time in the last five years that I know that this has been brought up, so for transportation, it can run from, what, about 10,000 to 14,000 each, excuse me?
I'd say, right now, the highest we have is about 9,000, so it goes from about 3,000 to 9,000, depending on where the students are going. So it goes from about 3,000 to 9,000, depending on where the students are going.
I would rather see the Senate fund vocational transportation rather than put it on the parents and the individual students. I think this is remiss in the senators' duties to pass this on to my table. It's another unfunded mandate.
Exactly.
And I'm not going to do their dirty work.
When we go to the budget, I apologize, I should have changed the order around. It sort of happened later, but the warrant article is here, and this is the warrant article that we have talked about bringing forward to the town, and I believe it would be appropriate, I think you're going to bring it this evening to the selectmen.
They already have it, but we needed to make sure to vote on the language. I have a draft version, which I wanted to make sure that they had for that. So, but since it ends up being, or it's brought by us, we need to vote on the language. So I encourage folks to take a look at it again, make sure we're comfortable with that language. If we want to tweak it all, we certainly can do that before voting. And then I can pass that language along to the town coordinator to make sure it's included in the warrant.
Perfect.
So, and just sort of as, as an update, Peter had worked with Mr. Pello to come up with a number that they felt would be able to provide the necessary, necessary system for the school. Based on what the police chief had suggested to us as far as his needs, the system would be upgradable and ready for it. And I think also part of the plan, and this should be noted as well, is that this number is lower than numbers that we were looking at as we were trying to plan during the capital Partly because we've sort of scaled back some of it, which we may, after we get a system in, we may find that we need to tweak it a little bit. But also because, you know, Mr. Pello and the technology folks believe that they can do some of the installation themselves. Which is a big cost savings for this, and being able to sort of handle it in-house. So, you know, I would like to just, well, thank Mr. Pello for all of the work that he and time, he and his staff have put into this so far, to come up with this number and come up with the plan. And also, thanks in advance for helping to get this put together, should we be able to fund this through a town meeting in May.
I'd like to thank Chief Dillon again for his expertise in this matter and, and working across departments. It was a pleasure to work with him on this.
Do folks have any comment on the wording in the article?
Would you need a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the article to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of up to $30,000 for the purchase and installation of a video surveillance system at the Dennett Elementary School and its recreational fields. The system will have the ability to provide appropriate public safety personnel and school administration with real-time remote access video feeds.
Do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And I will just note, as an aside for this, that the, the actual source of this will be determined by FinCon and the county, as far as whether they want to take this from the capital, capital for civilization fund, or whether they want to do anything else. We're leaving it sort of wide open because we're not, we're not best suited to determine where they want to vote the funds.
Absolutely. You were good with the wording, Christine, I believe, right?
I interviewed it in the system with other articles, yes.
Excellent.
Okay.
So the last thing on my listing this evening, which was rather long, actually, is school choice discussion. So posted for next month is the public hearing for school choice. It is one of the regulations in Massachusetts, and every school committee has to post a, a school choice hearing. So that will be on the agenda. It's actually already been put in papers. So that will be on for our April 25th meeting. I just wanted to see if the committee wanted to take a few minutes and think about, or to weigh in any thoughts on school choice, or if you want to wait until the April meeting. At this point, I believe kindergarten's around 28?
33.
33. We gained some. Okay, so we're up to 33 in kindergarten at this point in time. And we have, I think you received with Mr. Veneto's listing where all the other classes fit in in terms of numbers. And do we have a current student who has a sibling who might be interested in kindergarten?
That's correct.
One?
One.
One. So we don't need to take a vote?
I would like to make it abundantly clear-
Okay.
-as early as possible.
Okay.
Because I believe several of us got direct phone calls last year with someone who was very concerned about this. We had, a few years ago, a very low enrollment in kindergarten. We opened it up to public choice, and several families came to our assistance to help us fill those seats. And those families' siblings will always be welcome at the Dennett Elementary School, and we will absolutely open a seat as long as I'm here. We will make a motion and vote on it to open at least one slot, and I'm going to say a maximum of one slot, with the language in it like we had last year, for the family member of a current student who came to us through school choice.
And I certainly feel the same way. I think it's, it's the minimum that we go. But looking at the, at the current enrollment numbers for what will be first grade, and, you know, we still have, what will be second grade will be lower, but that is already a classroom with four school choice students in. So I think, you know, at this point, I'm not sure I'd be interested in any more slots than-
Sure.
-to make sure that we have families taken care of here who have been very supportive of the school and have been very active in the Dennett community.
Absolutely. Okay, that's wonderful. As I said, I just wanted to sort of give you the heads up that we'll need to take a vote, but we don't need to. I'd recommend taking a vote by the end of next month.
That's fine.
So, whatever. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
We need our executive, we need to make a motion to enter into executive session and not to return.
We'll call votes for the purpose of negotiations and security. So any will call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for all the hard work on the budget. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. And good night.